Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the June 13, 2023, meeting of the Dover School Committee. It is 5:31 PM. I am Beth McCoy, the superintendent, and I'm calling this meeting to order. The first order of business is to welcome our two new members, Jessie Hall and Martha Castle. Thank you so much for joining the team here, and we're very excited to have you. Feel free to ask questions along the way. It's a good reminder to us that we stop and explain things as we go for our new members, but feel free to ask.
Thank you. Happy to be here.
That said, we are starting with a new leadership opportunity, so I would like to ask if there is a nomination for a new chair of the Dover School Committee.
Jeff Cassidy, I've had the privilege of working with Liz for the last two years, and I think she shows commitment to the Dover schools and education in general. I think she has the best ideas in wanting to make sure all the kids are successful. So I would like to nominate Liz Grossman for our new chair.
Great. Thank you. Any other nominations? Is there a second for Liz?
A second, Beth.
Martha, a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Are you in favor? And accepting?
Yes.
All right, that's unanimous. Congratulations, Liz.
Thank you.
The meeting is all yours.
Okay, I believe the next order of business in reorganizing is we need to nominate a secretary. Does anyone have a nomination for secretary?
I would like to, she's not here at the moment, but I would like to nominate Golly a secretary, as having now one year of experience on the team, I think she would be well-suited for taking over as secretary.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise hands.
Discussion.
Any discussion?
No.
Any opposed? Okay, that was a unanimous vote. Great. Okay, moving on, next we have community comments. Is there anyone here to make a community comment before I read the preamble? Anyone online?
There's nobody on Zoom.
Okay, looks like the answer is no. So if we all agree, we'll move on. Okay, the first order of business is we have our PTO current president here, Betsy Police. We would like to welcome you. You were previously the vice president of the PTO, and we're just moved on to taking over. She will be giving us a brief update on this year's PTO's accomplishments.
Thank you. For my water, I've been talking all day. It's been to my very best year. We had our transition meeting this morning, our last meeting, our party, and then I'm here. So I've been talking about the PTO for like, you know, 12 hours straight. Thank you. I think I've got that. So a lot of familiar faces here. Hello, hello. For those of you who don't know me, my name's Betsy Police. I've been at Dover for five years. This is my fourth year on the board. I went up through Treasury, VP this past year, and then President for next year, so incoming president. And I'm here to give you an overview of our year, just like tell you what we've been up to. We've had lots of fun stuff happening. This up here, these are the high points. I'm gonna just, I'm gonna go through them and then just kind of hit them in detail a little bit more, so you have a little more detail. But, so the first thing is, we were able to host our full slate of in-person events this year, which is very exciting, the first time since 2019. So we did a little bit better the year prior, but this year, everything. This is really wonderful, because a really big part of our community is being able to gather and to meet people face-to-face. And so it was hard, having years where we couldn't do that, especially being the PTO, trying to pull people together. So being able to, very exciting. So this year, yay. Second, we ran 35 curriculum enrichment programs for PK through fifth. We spent a little over $32,000 doing so, and these are all additions to the classroom curriculum. So what we like to do is call ourselves the sprinkles on top of the beautiful cake that is already chickering school's curriculum. And so we sprinkled 35 curriculum enrichment programs this year, and they were really, really enjoyable for all of you. We supported our educators with $11,700 in discretionary funds. That is dueled out in increments of $250 per educator. And we had a record-setting 90% of educators in the classrooms submit for their discretionary funds. Very exciting for us. We've been trying to up the number for years, so 90% is very strong. And then we, so 90% of classroom teachers and 75% of specialists. So it was a high amount this year. We supported our teachers with $17,000 in teacher grants. That is our typical $5,000. And then we had a surplus of $12,000 from our auction that we chose to use for grants. So we did so well in our auction in 2022 that we were like, we are gonna take this grouping of money, this $12,000, and we're gonna accept grant proposals. And so we were able to dole out the money in that way, which was, I think, really great. I hope we can do it again the next auction. I hope we're that successful, because that would be, that would be great. And then lastly, $3,700 in hospitality. That's Teacher Appreciation Week. That's dinner, snacks, gifts, all fun stuff for the teachers. And we love doing that. That is fun. Lastly, we had a very successful fundraising year. We had our check rating year this year. We totaled 50, we netted, sorry, $57,203, which is high. Our goal was $35,000. So it was a very strong check rating campaign. So these are the events and community outreaches we were able to run this year. I won't go through all of them. I just want to pinpoint two. So International Cultural Night is one of, it's a fan favorite. Everyone loves it. And it's arguably our biggest night. It's hard to tell how many people comes, not like we check, however. I did print up the passports. I printed up 450, and there are only about 30 left. We did have over 400 kids, you know, filling out their passports and going around to the different countries, cultures, and regions. So that was very exciting. And that is typically in the fall. And the second I want to talk about was STEAM Day. So this is new. It's inaugural. It was run by our resident board scientist, Randy Benson. If you know her, she's incredible. And she planned all of the events for PK, sorry, kindergarten through fifth. And just to give you a visual, we all know the walkway by the kindergarten. It was filled all day long with kindergarten through fifth grade, doing STEAM projects, gathering around tables, working together, building things. And it was so great to watch. I mean, it was really, really wonderful. I wish, I put up pictures. I wish I had pictures. I can forward them later. The smiles, it was something new. It was something exciting. We did it right before Memorial Day weekend. And it, like, it just was something fun to do when some kids take off, the other ones were there, and they got to see all the fun things. So all the kudos to Randy Benson, who planned it all. I was only the Amazon shopper. She really did an amazing job. Two things I didn't put up there is we did the cereal box challenge. I just wanted to say that's so cute. It was to benefit A Place to Turn. They needed cereal. They reached out to us, because we partner with them frequently, and they said, we're in need of cereal. Shelves are bare. So we had kids and families bring in cereal boxes of cereal. We're able to line the hallways and do a domino all the way down the hallways of chickering. Should send those pictures to you, because that was really, really fun. Thank you. This is all the curriculum enrichment program that we were able to run this year. I won't go through any of them. You can just gaze upon that list of amazingness. The one thing I'll say is that Amy Collins and Randy Benson took a really close look at the programming this year, and they met with all of the teachers after last year. And they asked them, they said, what is it you are hoping to assist the kids in seeing outside of the classroom? Like, what is it you want to bring to their eyes that is not part of the curriculum that you're already offering? And that was the question they asked. And so they started peeling through the things they have been doing year after year, and while they, you know, are amazing and great, they found things that maybe they didn't want to repeat. So we had a lot of new things up there. And we actually, by doing that, we were able to shave down our curriculum enrichment budget as well. So not, not on purpose, but just a repercussion of the situation. So, budget, fun stuff. All the numbers. You'll see on the left, this is our projected budget for this year. We estimate a net operating income, a loss of $37,000. Seems like a lot. That is very typical for a check rating year. We try to offset our losses during check rating year with surpluses during auction year, and that's just how we run our budget. We also are incredibly conservative in our budgeting, so we estimate higher expenses and we also estimate lower income, just so that we're not surprised by anything. We don't like surprises. So what we ended up netting was a net loss of $8,000. You can just see, won't go through it, however, curriculum enrichment came in lower, teacher support typically comes in lower, but again, there's a higher number than usual because of so many taking their funds. Events, community administrative, all of that is very typical. So that's how we ended up. We're very well positioned after this year. And that's it. That was this year. It was such a great year.
Amazing.
That was this year. So this is next year. This board is super talented. I'm so thrilled. I'm so honored to lead them through the year. Each one of these ladies knows what they're doing and the role that they're in. They all are energetic, excite us be there, and it's gonna be a really, really great year. This is what we have planned so far. We've had a little powwow about next year. We have a few things on the board. We have our typical on-the-right events. We have their dates. It looks very similar to most years. The only difference is we're gonna bring our parents' night out to the fall, because we're trying to connect the parents earlier as much as possible. Some of the feedback we're getting is that while we do do a great job with, you know, getting the, connecting the parents, sorry, we do a great job with that, and they do compliment us. Well, thank you. We still feel like sometimes it's too late in the year. So we're trying to do it earlier in the fall, get the parents together, get them to meet each other. And that is like specifically the younger parents that just wanna like, just many people. So we're trying to do that. So all that looks the same, for the most part. The left side, a couple of things we're gonna try next year. So we're gonna try to up the chickering swag. We've had a lot of requests for fun items. So we're gonna pre-purchase some things over the summer, have them for sale, Dover Days, Welcome Back Picnic, and then the events. We think that'll be fun and, you know, also bring people together for your chickering stuff on. We want to, I'm just gonna say, the last thing we want to do, really, is try to increase our onboarding for new families. That was some feedback we got as well, is that, again, while they do know who to contact, it still is taking that leap is difficult when you're a new family member. As much as you want to show up to an event and meet people, walking into a room where you know one or two people and they might not be there is not easy. So we need to work through that a little bit and try to bring them along more than we do. And that is also the last point there with additional volunteer opportunities. We're adding in happy-to-help volunteers, people who don't want to commit to a year-long anything, but are happy to come in and help us. So we've gotten that. Every time I add slots to that, they fill up in five minutes. So plenty of people are happy to help, apparently. Oh, and the very last thing, this is, oh, I'm sorry, that's not the last thing. I was gonna say, spring auction, but I can talk right here. So our proposed budget, the numbers are very big, but sustainable. So this is our auction year. We plan on high expenses and we plan on high income. So while we do have a loss, a net loss up there, again, we are very conservative in our budgets, and we anticipate that when the actuals come in, it will be a surplus, because that is what has happened every auction year since we've been doing auctions. And so in reality, that will probably be a net, net income of probably plus 15 in the end. You can, you can check, check me that next year. But we remain sustainable. We can run everything we want to run. And our spring auction, our gross goal is $80,000. It's 80% of our expected income. Yeah, just you can see, our income is our auction. We have a few other fundraisers, but it's primarily auction. And then our expenses, our biggest expense is curriculum enrichment, per usual, followed right up by classroom and teacher support. Fundraising comes in next, and then we have our little stuff that finishes up that pie. And Julia Cavan made those beautiful pie charts for me. Thank you, Julia. Yeah, and so we're looking forward to a great year. Thank you all for having me. Please keep the lines of communication open. If you have anything you want to talk about ever, you know how to find me. And just lastly, from the PTO, thank you all for what you do. Congratulations to our new members, our new chair, and we're excited to work with you this year.
Thank you, Beth.
And if anyone has any questions.
Thank you, Beth.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for all you're doing for the PTO, and thank you to the PTO. You certainly make chickering a special place. Does anybody have any questions?
I have one.
Yes.
Do you know for the teacher gifts, on average, how much each teacher has, or like if there's any numbers behind, like, the different variation or variability among teachers and what they receive in the teacher gifts?
So teacher gifts, like, grandparent teacher gifts?
I'm sorry, the funding for discretionary funds for teachers.
Yeah, so discretionary funds, they each are allotted $250, and almost all of them take that full amount. If they go over, so what we do is we request receipts for submission. So that's just how our accounting works. We've had some talks of ways that we could streamline giving them the money. In the end, we do sort of meet the receipt, you know, at transaction, just for our accounting purposes. So we'll say, like, if they go a little bit over, they'll still receive just $250. If they go under, they'll, you know, receive up to $250. They can submit more than one time in a year. So if they want to use $100 in the fall and $150 in the spring, we'll take it twice. We try to do whatever we can to help them take the money. So on average, I'd say most take the full amount if they submit, is my answer. And very few will do a partial submission, but it would be fine.
And the grants is on top of that?
The grants are on top of that. So we have a grant period the beginning of the fall, usually the month of September. So if they want to submit for some of the $5,000, they just, they write it up and they send it in. Our vice president handles the reading of the grants and accepting of the grants, so.
Yeah. Anyone else?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you so much for all you did this year. It's amazing to see how the curriculum enrichment program was reshaped and in a way that the budget was also, was more efficiently done. And also, I wanted to compliment the PTO on the newsletter format. I think the newsletter format was changed, and I think it's much better to navigate through it and click on the CE programs that each class had. So I think it's, these are all exciting changes. Thank you.
So I will say that our fearless leader, Tinley Gilbert, who is an incredible president, I mean, she truly gave it all, and she is, as we, most of us know, an absolute ray of sunshine. You know, she busted in and happiness follows. And so she, she did the newsletters, and she worked on that. I know she did. So she will be appreciative of that. And then I would have to say that curriculum enrichment, really, like Randy and Amy working on, they did a lot of work. And it was primarily over the summer. So I always try to just, whenever, it's not in the typical timeframe you would think of of working for the PTO. They do it a lot of off-hours. So they're amazing, and we're supposed to have them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, thank you for all you do.
Have a great night. I know it's a long one.
Okay, our next agenda item is the superintendent report.
Great. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My rate, update is brief, because I'll have an opportunity to update all three committees at once at our 6:30 meeting. I would just like to recognize our educators and our leaders who organize several end-of-year activities for our students. It seems like when we get to the end of the year, the energy level of students ramps up for kids and down for teachers as we run out of steam. So thank you for pulling deep from your reserves of energy to make all of these activities happen, including STEAM Day, all of our Field Day activities, everything special and unique to chickering. So thank you. Graduation. I'd like to recognize the 149 students who graduated from Dover Sherburne High School two weeks ago. Obviously, half of those belong to the Dover community, so congratulations. And they are all, they all crossed the stage, and many wonderful stories of resilience, grit, perseverance. There are, of course, some who just ran and kept running. They don't need us anymore. Others who said thank you, and others that needed a little help across that stage. So lots of great stories for each one of our students. I'd also like to recognize the retirements from chickering. We have Steve Hart, our technology director, who is retiring. And we have Ken Wadness, our grade five teacher educator for a long time, who are both retiring, both big losses to the chickering community, and have certainly left their mark on many students and the schools moving forward. That said, there is always a silver lining, which is that we've been able to hire some new folks. So thank you to Dr. Reineman, Mr. Carnes, and all the teams of teachers that have sat in with you on interviews and mock lessons. Fabulous new educators coming on board, full of excitement, full of ideas to engage and enrich the classroom for our students. So I think that new blood and that new perspective is gonna do wonders for our district. So thank you for your hard work there. And that's it for me at this point. Happy to take any questions or comments.
I have one question. The, and maybe, I don't know who can answer it. The new technology person, are we going back to the old model? Are we staying with the current model? I know there were, COVID got things weird, and just wondering what's the plan? Do anyone wants to answer that?
In the absence of Mr. Conklin.
Yeah.
For Reineman.
All that and more. So some of the, well, a lot of the support, the tech support that Mr. Hart was providing, Mr. Gaffney will be doing as well. We're also looking to have Mr. Gaffney doing a much more instruction back in the classroom, now that we've got our schedules mapped out. We're still big fans of the co-teaching model. So if I'm teaching a research project in grade two, instead of me being the sole teacher teaching research and navigating websites and databases, the technology teacher is there as well. The all-time favorite, keyboarding in third grade.
Yeah.
So those, you know, those old standbys will be there as well. And then looking to integrate into more of the wind blocks, which you'll hear from about when I get to the school improvement plan.
Awesome. Thank you. Anybody else?
Thanks, Beth.
Okay, next we have Dr. Reineman with the principal's report.
All right, I'm gonna slide over a couple seats, because I don't want Golly to fall out of her chair. Good evening. Jessie, Martha, welcome. Excited to have you on board.
Thank you.
Congratulations to Golly and Liz on your new leadership roles. Very excited. And thank you to the PTO, she's gone, but for the financial support, emotional support, and food. Always grateful. I think they're providing breakfast later this week, too. So we'll be well-fed to dig deep again, as you said, Beth, for resources and through the end. Flag Day tomorrow morning. Hope it doesn't rain. And then our fifth grade promotion ceremony on Thursday. We had our rehearsal today. I think we all survived. And then on Friday, which is a half-day for students, we have our favorite, "Be Joyful." And if you're not sure what the tune is, just go home and think, just say, "Be joyful," and watch what happens, because hopefully they'll burst into song over and over and over again, and you can thank me later. End of the year brings a lot of wrapping up and saying goodbye, and a lot of big emotions. I wrote about that in the newsletter, parent newsletter, last week. It also brings in data meetings, joy for everyone. And I want to express my thanks to Mr. Carnes and our coaches, Priscilla Stefan, Lindsay Weiner, and Leslie Campbell, and all of our grade-level teachers who all met with that crew to look at the end-of-year data. So they looked at not only academic data, but social, emotional data, and how did our students do? And as the year moves along, the benchmarks move, right? Your beginning of the year, middle of the year, end of the year benchmarks. And our students came through beautifully. We, as you would expect, had some work to do at the start of the year and made great strides, and there's still work to do. So we're proud of the progress the students have made. So it was an exciting and very deep dive, and should you like a deeper dive into it, I can, I won't be able to fit it into the time we have, but if you'd like that for the next school committee meeting, we can show you what a data meeting looks like, to get an idea of how that rolls. I have our goals in here for the school improvement plan, thanks to our school advisory council. So thanks to Rob Andrews, George Fervino, Jessie Hall, Colleen Bird, Bob Cox, Allison Parker, Ally Maturi, and Nisha Hoffman. We have created two large goals, which are in the packet. Chickering will continue to refine its multi-tiered system of supports, or MTSS, to ensure that all students have access to differentiated curriculum, targeted interventions, and evidence-based resources to support their academic, social, and emotional development within the framework of Portrait of a Graduate. So the new piece to this is taking the portrait of the graduate, which was the work we started pre-COVID, and making it come alive at chickering by grade level. At the end of kindergarten, what does Portrait of a Graduate mean? I know we all love that post, "Everything I ever needed to learn, I learned in kindergarten," which is still in our kindergarten presentation. We did two months ago. So there's a lot there. It's really all right there. But what does that look like in kindergarten? How to be a good friend, all those characteristics. And so working with our teachers to, to go to those pieces of a graduate. So also with that comes the idea of the "what I need" block and expanding our offerings beyond tier-two support and looking at how can we do some enrichment at grade levels, hence the technology teacher, and looking to see how we can push in his expertise to supporting students in the classroom in those rotations that we do through the wind blocks. The second goal.
Before you go on, if I could, the enrichment programs, is that going beyond what the curriculum currently provides to challenge the kids more?
Yes. Yep. Good question. Thank you. And then our second goal is chickering will continue to foster school community free from bias and discrimination and to, as SAC wants me, I wish I'd put in bold, ensure a sense of belonging and equitable outcomes for all Dover students through communication, curriculum review, and policy review. So a very similar goal we had before. And the specifics for that are looking at, oh, refining chickering citizens and spelling chickering correctly. Sorry. So the chickering citizens was a grade-five program where our students became helpers across the school. It was a solid launch and is ready for a good polish before it comes out again. So we're ready to do that. Continuing the implementation of Teachers College Reader's Workshop, year three of five, and continuing research and planning the math curriculum, as well as the SEL curriculums that we've been working on. And of course, the new website is going to save everything, so. So flying through there, I think you have to have to do a vote on that, but I'll finish my report, and then you can do that piece. The handbook changes are in the packet as well. We talked about it last time, and you asked for a sample, so it's simply there. I'm taking lots and lots of words and boiling it down to a link, so that when you go to read the materials, it's more digestible. And then the personnel, we had Step Up Day yesterday, and even five of our new students coming in joined us as well. So new to chickering folks came in as a second grader. You get to go and meet all of the third-grade teachers and hear about third grade. So we all went through that yesterday. And of course, the announcements of who's teaching in which classes are in the packet. And you heard about our STEAM extravaganza. It was an excellent first attempt at an all-school STEAM piece. We're meeting tomorrow, actually, with Randy to debrief the event and look at how we can, more fixing and polishing and making the experience richer for all students. So there's the flyby. And I'm happy to answer questions. And I'm sure there's votes in here that I probably blew right by, so apologies.
No, you're good.
We'll circle back to them.
Yeah. Thank you, Dr. Reineman. Congrats to making it this week. You're really close. Does anybody have any questions they would like to ask?
I have a question about the chickering citizens program. I think it's a great program. Are you thinking of expanding it beyond grade, fifth grade, or you want to keep it to the fifth graders and just add more to that?
Great question. We're gonna keep it with fifth grade for right now and add more ways that they can help across the school.
Okay.
Some of the auctions were very popular, like helping the kindergarteners get out to the bus and pawing through lost and found, not so much. So. So we're looking to do that and make them a little more equitable. Some of the jobs were much more time-demand than others, so trying to even that out a little bit. Looking at the sign-up and the rotation. We did three rotations this year. I think we're gonna try, we're thinking about doing two instead. Don't hang it me still. Yes, okay. Thank you. And making it, they've got a, we did a slideshow. We got feedback from the kids who did it this year, so that we can introduce it to the fourth graders with, this is what it looked like. These are some examples. Hopefully, when they sign up, they'll have a better idea of what we're getting into.
And do they sign up themselves? They pick the?
They do, but you have to sign it. So it comes home, and you have to, with them, make the commitment, too. And there's a little, little writing piece, making a statement for why you might want to be involved with this.
Oh, okay.
Way of this opportunity.
That's nice. That's great.
Yeah, thank you.
Sure, thank you.
I have a question, perhaps a newbie question. Do you, would you be able to give just a little bit of background about the math pilot that you're running, and if there's any sort of feedback in the three years that you've done it? This is, I think you're three of five, you said?
So that's Reader's Workshop.
Oh, that's Reader's Workshop.
Yep.
Okay. Well, if there's any feedback on the successes or kind of work in progress of the math pilot to date.
Sure. We undertook a great big buffet this year. I think is the best way to say it. We sampled here, we sampled there, we did a little of this, a little of that, and learned. And learned that we need to do a much deeper dive next year, and a much more data-driven dive next year. So we're looking to bring in full-year commitments to a teacher, a curriculum. Denny has a whole map, because I don't want to steal his thunder. Is it coming up later?
Not in detail, no.
All right, and kindergarten's, I don't want to steal the thunder of these guys running in. And so we're looking to pair up across the schools, so with grade levels, and decide how we can get some good data on what math curriculum will meet the needs of all of our students.
Got it.
The spoiler alert, there is no curriculum anywhere that meets the needs of all students and is perfect. So everything that we bring in will need something. Everyday math needed work when we brought it in. It came with a bazillion manipulatives that we found after a couple of years we didn't need, but we thought we did in the beginning. So we, you know, as you go through a curriculum for a couple of years, it changes up. So I want to be very clear, there's not going to be a perfect one, but we're going to find something that hopefully meets more students and does a better job of differentiating in a way that's manageable for the classroom teacher. Right? Certainly teaching to, you know, one lesson, but when you want to differentiate for those who need support and those who are ready to fly, creating materials for that, which is what we did in a lot of the everyday math.
Yep.
Is a lot of work. And we have great stuff we've put together. So we're going to be, next year, really look at what makes sense.
This year was for one grade, next year?
This year was all over the place.
This year was all over the place. And next year it will also be?
It'll be, I believe.
Across grades.
One classroom per grade across the school.
Got it.
Six classes.
Total.
Yes, at Chicaring and six at Pine Hill. And that makes a team of 12 that can then work together for that.
This, this year was only a sampling of a few lessons from those curriculum for a period of time.
Got it, thank you.
Thanks, helpful.
Thanks.
Anybody else? Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Dawn, your favorite part, the warrant report.
So for new members, so a warrant is actually just the, the big batch of invoices that we send to be paid on behalf of the school. And so we, you have one signer on school committee who signs all the warrants, which I don't know who that'll be going forward. Liz has been doing it for us. But because one person signs, we do share with the whole committee the batches that were sent over and what funds where the expenditures went against. So this is just a monthly report you'll see. Feel free to always, I always offer to new members sort of like a sit-down ABC of finances of school. So take me up on that at any time, I'm happy to do that. I know I did it with Liz, I don't know if Jeff, I did it for you, but I've done it with a lot of members because there are some financial terms that don't make sense initially. My favorite is always, we'll talk about circuit breaker. And Angie Johnson, who's been a member of Sherburne and the region, always thought when we were talking about electrical circuit breaker box. So I always think that's sort of, you just take it for granted that everyone is talking your, your lingo. So this is what the vouchers that, or the warrants have been sent over to the town of Dover since your last meeting.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
Just don't get any questions on that one.
Okay, so.
Hop into the monthly report?
Please, thank you.
So every time you meet, I'll provide the most accurate, or the most accurate, the most timely statement of appropriations for you. So today's as of May 31st. It's broken out by sort of what we call function codes, meaning superintendent, business, finance, for salaries, and you get down to expenditures of sort of by sort of department. And then the bottom part is our added districts. So again, for new members, the town, the Dover School Committee actually oversees all students in Dover pre-K through the age of 22 who attend schools outside of our public schools. That sits in your budget. So even though there might be a high schooler who lives in Dover who goes out of district, it's not at the region's level, it sits in your, your budget. So I think by understanding that puts perspective on the numbers a little bit more. So that, that's just a piece of information on that. I usually run a narrative that just runs for the whole year. And on a monthly basis, what's in bold is new information, but it's nice to sort of have the, to be able to refer back so you don't have to look at your old reports. The only new information I have this year, I'm sorry, this month is on expenditures. We obviously have closed out our heating oil contract. And based on the amount of oil that we used and the more favorable price than we thought, we're actually looking at a positive variance in utilities versus the negative that we started out at the beginning of the year. So that was great news. And one of the highlights of my year, and I don't know why, is the fuel bid for Chicaring. And that happened a couple of weeks ago. And we're locked in this year at a rate of $2, almost like $2.50. So that's good news. And because of that, we didn't top off our oil tank, which also gave us some additional savings. There was no need to top off on the existing contract where we, we're going to be paying a higher price. So that obviously gave you some savings as well. On the added district, we are continuing to see fluctuations both in placements and some new placements. At the end of the year is when some cases that have been going, been in negotiations, say, all year long, finally start getting settled. So what happens is usually we have to go back and pay for the full year. I'm anticipating one or two more of those to bring to you in September. But we are looking at a little bit of an increase, I think it was 270,000. And our last meeting is now up to 310. And we will continue to, my guess is see that go a little higher when I report out to you in September. But keep in mind that you have the circuit breaker, so it's, it's reimbursement that we get from the state on our added district expenses from the prior year. The town of Dover acts like that we are not getting that, so we budget 100%, assuming we're not going to get any reimbursement. So that reimbursement is sort of our safety net for where we, when we run deficits. So at the bottom of your statement, you'll see that we're going to be receiving like $1.1 million in circuit breaker. So that helps to offset your almost $400,000 negative variance. And so that's a luxury, sort of that we have here in Dover, that it sort of makes it a little less stressful for us to worry about where we're going to come up with that funding.
So Dawn, just to make sure I understand it, then that means that we carry down our budget for a year, but then it gets reimbursed by the state the following year?
Exactly, for whatever, based on our expenditures. At a formula that we, you know, at some point in time, we'll, we'll go over, but yes.
Okay, thank you.
And so the increased expenses that we're seeing in placements this year, we'll actually see the reimbursement for that next year. So sometimes you're going to have a, you're going to have sort of a larger circuit breaker. So say you have a large placement graduate out, you're getting reimbursed for that in the next year. So all of a sudden, you have a little bit of a surplus more than you, than you thought. So that's sort of how that equation works. And then just looking at fiscal year '24, I've given you some updates. We continue to look at enrollment. So I know we were going back and forth about where we were going to be with kindergarten because the number was a little low for four sections. However, where we are now and knowing that we have been having additional registration inquiries, we have told the school to go ahead and have four kindergarten classes. And so that, that final position has been posted. And so based on this, we will have the budgeted four sections in kindergarten. All of, all of our other grades as of June 9th are falling within the budget projections that we anticipated. So, but we will still continue to look at that, but we're in a good position to still have room for growth. And a lot of sections without exceeding your guidelines is 17 to 22. So that's what we strive for, all of our sections to be between 17 and 22.
So Dawn, on that, are the kindergarten classes will be very small classes?
Probably, we'll probably, where I think we'll end up is 16, 17. So you're right on that cusp that if you don't do that, you're going to be at 22.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's that funny thing where between three and four, you sometimes have that outcome. But for a kindergarten, that would be our preference. And so, and be also, you already had it in your budget. It'd been one thing if we were looking and we were going to have to add it to the budget, but it was already there. It's already, the schedule's already built that way, your specials are already sort of set up that way. So in a way, it made sense. And we were close enough to getting up to at least hitting the 17 that we felt, we should go ahead and do it.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Next, we are moving on to our second read of the 2023-2024 Family Handbook. We did our first read at last month's meeting. Dr. Reineman, correct me if I'm wrong, just so our new members know. We had some like formatting changes and like you sort of hinted at before, there was like a link added, but not major substantive changes.
No, these are the policies that the district adopted in January at the joint committee. And so instead of putting in the full text in the body of the handbook, because it gets pretty cumbersome, we've inserted those links so as changes happen at the district level, it automatically matches up to what we have in place. So it has the same preamble and the same closing required statements, but the text that way will definitely match what the other schools have. We're hoping to try and get much more in line and cleaner in all of our family handbooks. This will help us get to that.
Okay. So. Tell me if I do this wrong. Can I get a motion to approve the 2023-2024 Family Handbook? Is there a second? Thank you. Are there any questions or further discussion? All in favor? And that means nobody is opposed, so the motion carries.
Great, perfect, well done.
I did it. Okay.
Try it again.
Yeah. Well, first, we have the first read of the 2023-2024 School Improvement Plan.
Which Dr. Reineman already went over.
You kind of.
No, there's questions or feedback.
Anybody have any other questions or feedback? I know it was in your packet.
So what'll happen now is we'll have our leadership retreat in August where all of our 17 leaders come together. And as Denny and I continue to refine our, our district strategic plan, we'll come up with our district goals for next year, the superintendent goals for next year, we'll put the school improvement plans for all four schools back on the table. We might have minor shifts for your second read. And so you'll see the second read of the Chicaring School Improvement Plan in September. And, you know, you're welcome to provide additional feedback at that time or vote to approve it.
Any other questions? Okay. Next, we have our consent agenda, which included the minutes from our May 15th meeting. You guys weren't here. So I was wondering if anybody would like, can we have? Does anyone have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'm making a motion.
Do we have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, motion carries. So next.
So you had three in favor and two abstaining if you weren't here.
Sorry, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next, we have the communications. Do we really go over that or is just like?
We can just talk briefly about it.
Okay.
So in your packet are subcommittee assignments with short descriptions. And so if you want to think between now and September about which subcommittees you'd be interested in participating on, if you have questions, you're welcome to reach out to myself, Dawn, Denny, Dr. Reineman. We'll do, we can explain kind of the purpose of each one. Some are just liaisons where you sit down on meetings with your PTO or challenge success and report back out to the, the committee here. The only thing I want to clarify tonight is the Union 50 membership. So Union 50 is what allows both the Dover School Committee, the Sherburne School Committee, and the Regional School Committee to share one superintendent. So technically, Union 50 membership and that subcommittee only really needs to come together if you're hiring a new superintendent. I don't know if that's in, in your future. I don't know what you're planning. But that said, usually it's the three senior members on the Dover School Committee, the three senior members on the Sherburne School Committee, and all six members of the region who serve on that committee. So that being said, that would be Liz, Jeff, and Goli serving as your Union 50 members next year, should you need it.
Do you mind providing just like a brief? Few words on the elementary literacy?
Sure, you missed the math. Dr. Reineman has already explained technology next year and the math pilot. So do you want to talk anything about literacy?
Just in case anyone has questions about the reading workshop model.
I'd be happy to give context to you.
Yes.
So we provided in your packet a wonderful document that Denny worked with our two elementary principals on and our elementary coaches for literacy, just responding to, similar to what we did for the math pilot, how it is that we came to adopt the unit, units of study for reading. That was something that had started at Pine Hill and they had been adopting over time. Since I came here six years ago, there had been a request from the, the Chicaring educators for a reading program, having reached out to all of the like districts, kind of that we always compare ourselves to and share notes with. They were all using units of study. So we piloted them at Chicaring. We had many of our educators go to the Teachers Institute and Teachers College to do the training. Those who piloted it first had positive feedback, so we continued to roll out the units of study. That said, we have a comprehensive program. It's not just the units of study and many lessons and conferring and, and all of that. We also have phonics and several other programs, including integrity and intervention systems in place to make sure that we are taking care of both the science of reading and the love of reading together at the same time, identifying students who perhaps need some extra support, giving them small doses of extra support and monitoring their progress. So it's certainly comprehensive, it's not just one or the other, it's a mix of both. So hopefully that document does, I think, an excellent job of outlining kind of the rationale of why we use the units of study, the research behind it. And if you have any questions, Denny, Dr. Reineman, our literacy coaches would be happy to answer them.
And that's also available on the website.
Yes, yes.
Perfect, thank you. Any questions, comments? I think that brings us to the end of our agenda. So, how do you sometimes say this? May we adjourn by unanimous consent?
Anybody opposed?
Anybody opposed? All in favor?
All in favor.
Thanks.
Thank you, well done.